At this time, I will accept the motion to go back into open.
I will go first.
Do you have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Name it. We were in executive session. We're returning back into open and we are in the executive session under attorney-client privilege. We will be going back into closed at the end of the meeting for personnel matters. At this time, I will open up the public portion. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address, and you can speak for three minutes on agenda items only. Is there work we're right to tell you?
It sounds great.
We dread to say it before game. Jacob McGarret six post show today at New Rose Park. Ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience, members of the board, Mr. Harms, Mr. President Harms. Good evening.
Good evening.
Item one, district substitutes. How much are they getting paid?
Substitute teachers are paid ninety-five dollars per day.
This was supposed to be printed on the agenda, right?
Yes, I got your hint, Mr. Magiera, and I will make sure that that mistake does not occur again. But if it's of any ease to your mind, the salary amounts for substitute teachers have not changed at all in years. Still the same.
Thank you. Number twelve, approval of transfers. Other expenses, or is that other purchase services? What does that mean? Please explain it because you're up there twenty-some-odd thousand dollars. And the other expense, retirement contribution, where is that?
All of those labels refer to GAAP captain code. The numbers you see to the right, the majority of the items are purchased services, and that is why the computer printout labels it that way. I could give you some more detailed information if you like. The first item is for purchase services for residency investigations. So we're purchasing the service of a person to do investigation. Another item, purchase service. We have been providing morning police security at the high school. So that's a purchase service. We're purchasing the service of the local police department. Another purchase service there is for psychiatric evaluations. So we're purchasing the service of a psychiatrist to do an evaluation for our child study team members. Another purchase service is for bedside instruction. We have to purchase instructional services for children who are currently hospitalized in a facility. I'm not sure which other question. Oh, you asked about retirement contribution as an employer. We are required under law to pay a part of their hers retirement contribution.
Do any of the board members have a copy of what you just mentioned?
Yes, they all do.
They do?
Yes.
No?
Yes, they all do.
Okay. Legal services went down nine thousand dollars. What happened there?
If I have to increase, if there's an increased cost in a particular area, I must by law take money from another line item in our budget to transfer the money. You're only allowed to transfer money that you actually have. I watch closely the school district's budget on a daily basis, and I make educated decisions as to where I feel there is sufficient funds left over. So in this case, I saw that our legal costs were less than they had been in the past, so I felt comfortable that I could take money from that line item to transfer it to a location where we need it.
Is that paying Peter Robb, Peter to pay for?
Absolutely not. It's paying for the required costs of the school districts' education for our children.
And number fourteen. Jacob, time's up. Your three minutes is up. Your three minutes is up. Actually, you had more than three. I didn't put it on. Is this part of the budget? No, it's not part of the budget, so no. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. On agenda items only, three minutes.
So appears from one fifty Berwick Street. Will the budget have a separate public hearing?
Yes, there will be time for comments and questions.
Thank you. Oh, actually, I don't know if this falls under, but since proclamations, are they on this one? Can I speak about an incident that happened at the last meeting? Or should everybody go to the second portion?
Second portion.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. At this time, we'll go into committee reports. Any committee reports? Hearing none, we're going to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Harms. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's superintendent's report set aside to go over the 2018, 2019 budget presentation and also to address any questions with regard to the budget that will be voted on on the next Board of Education meeting, May eighth, 2018. So at this time, I would like to ask the Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Chris Miller, to introduce the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Burrito. Good evening, everyone. And at this point, we are going to give the budget presentation. And just to give you a quick recap, we've had numerous meetings over the past two to three months concerning forming the budget for the 2018, 2019 school year. And Finance Committee alone with Mrs. Gercio and Mr. Burrito, we have been putting in our time to go over it, and a lot of the hard work obviously went to Mrs. Gercio. And just to recap quickly, we were waiting on a few things, and obviously, there were some expenditures that were coming in as far as health benefits and insurance that we had an estimate on, but we did not have any hard numbers on. And another one was Governor Murphy's budget address when the state figures would be released to, whether we got the same aid, more aid, or less aid. And those state figures came out on March fifteenth, and they were released. And much to our delight, we got a bump in our aid, our state aid that Mrs. Gercio will definitely explain to you momentarily. And from that news, the Finance Committee met that next day to discuss where we're heading with the revenue and with those state figures going forward and also how we balance it with the expenditures that we're going to have in 2018, 2019. So we did that, and we are going to present that to you now. And these decisions that we made were difficult decisions, but because when we're representing the community, we represent the community members as well as our staff, as well as our students, and providing our students with the best possible avenues for education and to increase student achievement. That's our goal. That's our goal as board members, and that's what we feel this budget reflects going forward with minimal tax levy, as Mrs. Gercio will describe to you now. So Mrs. Gercio, I would like to welcome you to present the 2018, 2019 budget. You have three minutes.
Is that a promise? Thank you. First of all, I want to thank people on the Finance Committee who spent many, many hours working alongside Pedro and myself. Of course, that would be Mr. Miller, Ms. Powers, and Mr. Senkup, working the last several months, putting this all together. First slide is a quick indication of the expenditures in the district. Quickly points out, just like every other school district, that the majority of the costs are the costs of salaries and health benefits. Those two items put together alone come to seventy-six percent of the budget. All the other items are much smaller in comparison. This next slide indicates a spread of four years, going back to 2015, sixteen, up through and including our proposed budget for next year, the school year 2018, 2019. You will see that many of the items in this list, over the course of four years, change relatively little. Again, with the exception of salaries and health benefits, those items do increase the most. We've also seen an increase recently in cost for tuition at a district. And basically, most of the other items stay relatively the same. I do want to point out, however, that the district was fortunate to receive some additional state aid last year, and we made the decision to use that additional state aid to make additional payments for our lease purchases. And there was a reason for that. Instead of making the payments in July, the first week in July, we made them instead the last week in June, which changes it to a different budget year. But by making those double payments, that then allowed us in this new budget to have payments of zero for three of our lease purchases. And there was a reason for doing that, and the reason was we were trying very, very hard to put together a project to do some renovations here at the high school to move us forward into the 21st century with some new steam wing classrooms to provide a lot of additional opportunities for our students. The cost of that renovation is approximately seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. So we had to work some magic in our budget to do that without costing the taxpayers a lot of money. That was our objective. And we're happy to report that we feel we've been able to accomplish that. We also, in this upcoming year, have received some additional state aid. The additional state aid that we received was a total of five-hundred-forty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-seventy dollars. And we had many, many discussions as to how we were going to utilize that additional state aid to the benefit of the district. Unfortunately, along with the good news about the additional state aid, we also received an additional bill. We found out that we had a Roselle Park resident in a state facility, and we're, of course, obligated to pay their tuition, education costs. So we found out we had an unknown bill of thirty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-two dollars. About the same time, we also found out that in the wood shop, one of the very large classrooms that we're about to renovate this summer had some asbestos in the floor. So in order to do the renovation, we were going to need to do appropriate environmental asbestos removal. And estimates given to us told us that that would cost about seventy-thousand dollars that we did not anticipate. We also made a decision to leave money in our capital reserve and maintenance reserve that we initially planned to remove to pay for the classroom renovation. But when we got the great news about the additional state aid, we realized we didn't have to use that reserve. So we decided to leave that money in reserves with the hope then that that would be available in the future to do some additional types of projects throughout the district. And finally, with the governor's additional state aid, it was very obvious that one area that they were looking to have all districts improve, and that was in the area of security. So we decided to place the remainder of those funds in contracted services to allow us to do a number of improvements in the area of security. So if you look at the bottom line, you'll see that our budget from last year to this year has really not increased a great amount. Of course, when you set up a budget, there's the expense side, and then there's the matching revenue side. For Roselle Park, revenue is comprised mostly of state aid, local taxes, tuition that we bring in to some of our special programs, and then some other minor miscellaneous revenues along with our entitlement grants such as IDEA and ESEA that all school districts get on an annual basis. When putting the budget together, it's done through the New Jersey Department of Education budget software. And as I input data into that budget software, they likewise supply me with some data, one of which is a computation that tells us what Roselle Park's maximum tax levy can be for the following year. At the right, you'll see a little explanation of that computation. They take the previous year tax levy and they add to that an enrollment adjustment that they give to us as our student population goes up every year. They compute what the additional students should cost in your budget. So they gave us an enrollment adjustment of sixty-thousand-seventy-eight dollars. They then take those two figures, add them together, and compute two percent for the two percent tax levy cap, and add that together for a subtotal of twenty-two-million-twenty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty-four dollars. We were also given a health benefit adjustment because our health benefit costs keep going up each year. And the adjustment they gave to us because of the numbers we have are eighty-five-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-one dollars. When you add that together, you get the maximum tax levy for next year. And you can see there, the maximum tax levy that we could put into our budget without having to get additional community voter's approval would be twenty-two-million-one-hundred-fifteen-thousand-two-hundred-five dollars. However, we decided that we really did not need to utilize what the government was allowing us to request for our maximum tax levy. Instead, our proposed tax levy is twenty-one-million-seven-hundred-fifty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-eight dollars, which, if you look at this up above there, you'll see that's three-hundred-sixty-thousand-two-hundred-twenty-seven dollars less than what we could have asked. What happens then is the state puts that into their figures as banked cap, which means we have the possibility, if we need it sometime in the next three years, to add that to our budget. And right now, this board sitting here before you hopes that that will not be a necessity. That's definitely what we're planning. As you can see, state aid has varied over the years. The one yellow line was that horrendous year when Governor Christie took office and cut our state aid by one-point-four-million dollars, did drastic things to our budget. We needed to lay off, it was approximately forty staff members as a result. And state aid in the following years grew a little but stayed kind of stagnant for a number of years, up until last year. Finally, state aid figures now have seemed to be moving in the right direction. And I think when you get to the end of our presentation, you'll realize by that additional state aid being given to the school district, it's a good thing for the community because what's happening as a result is our local tax levy increase is decreasing. Our budget has grown a lot over the course of fifteen years. Unfortunately, state aid is nowhere consistent in growth. So we've been struggling for many years to provide the children of Roselle Park the appropriate education that they rightly deserve, doing so with the least amount of dollars that we could possibly request. Our school tax levy is comprised of two components. The major portion of our budget is called our general fund. And that has its tax levy component. And we also have debt service because back in 2004, the community passed a referendum to do major additions to several of our school buildings. And we went out for bonds, and we're now paying back. It was close to ten million dollars. We're paying that back over a period of twenty years. Final payment will be in the year 2025. So that gives us our debt service tax. Put those two figures together, and the total school tax with this proposed budget is twenty-two-million-four-hundred-forty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-eight dollars, which is about two-hundred-thousand more than last year. So the big thing that everybody most wants to hear is what exactly is that as the tax impact for the average homeowner in Roselle Park. Here you see a chart that is based upon the net valuation taxable amount for the town of Roselle Park and the tax rates that that computes to. And the average home in Roselle Park is a home assessed at two-hundred-fifty-three-thousand dollars. And for an average home, that will mean an increase of forty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents for the year. And in conversation with Ken Bloom from Barrel Hall, I believe their tax impact is slightly higher, but very close to ours. Not that we're in a contest, but we did a little better. So kudos to this group here sitting before you, the board members, for putting together a very financially responsible budget. And now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Burrito to talk about how this impacts the programs in Roselle Park schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Gercio, and thank you for the time that you put into the budget. You realize that this is a process that starts back in December. And I want to thank the Finance Committee as well. When we put a budget together and the board has, you know, it's a very challenging thing because they obviously have the responsibility for the taxpayers, but mostly importantly, the responsibility for the children of Roselle Park. And when, again, this budget is put together, what do we want to do with the funding that we have available? Where do we want to go? We sit down, we make sure that we have a needs assessment. We set goals where our students should be getting their education. And obviously, we want to make sure that we continue to provide them with 21st century learning. It is critical for college readiness and workplace readiness that we give them the opportunity for the technology necessary to learn at that level. So we're going to continue on a four-year cycle, starting with new laptops for instructional staff and additional owners for students. Equipment to consolidate and improve the main server. If we don't have the technology in place and the infrastructure in place with the technology, no matter what programs we have, we cannot do better. So we want to make sure that we improve the main servers so they can have better internet and technology in the classrooms. We all know that we are planning a wonderful project for a student, which is right here at this high school, to give an opportunity to provide them with STEAM education. So we are going to also dedicate some of our funding to new STEAM room equipment, means new technology, furniture, and so forth. Digital resources, no content areas. We know that now every single content area, it's getting away from books and it's going more to digital resources. All of our curriculum, Amea, science, social studies, and even literacy has components, or they have components, that are all digital. Now that we have a one-to-one in grade six to twelve, and really a two-to-one in elementary, we can utilize that to the maximum. And we're also looking at a data tool, GoldLink. Actually, we have been pivoting. It's something that we have been looking for for a few years because it's going to give the teachers the tools to know exactly what needs to be taught, where the students' deficiencies are, where the students' strengths are, and we can better plan our instruction. So we certainly want to put some funding into that. In the curriculum, obviously, the next generation science standards, we have to comply with those standards. And we are looking, or we have in place now a phenomena-based science program with digital resources. It's called Mystery Science. The expansion of K-12 STEAM curriculum. If we're going to dedicate as much as we are into the STEAM lab and hopefully add more STEAM classrooms as we go along in the next few years, we have to also expand the curriculum to go along with it. Math workshops and staff and analysis of data. As you know, from our park math course, this is where we need to dedicate more time, effort, and training to make sure that we provide our students the best education possible. And of course, we have a balanced literacy approach to our literacy, to our reading and writing program. We want to continue doing that because that is research-based and that is good, effective instruction. And we're going to update our K-5 social studies curriculum with new resources and again, provide better digital resources. Buildings and grounds. We cannot, if we don't have the right infrastructure, if we do not have equipment and furniture that can be consistent with the programs that we have, it's not going to be any good. So we want to make sure, again, the new classroom renovation, that we're hoping to have a grand opening sometime next year. Our goal is to have it ready by the end of October and open it up to the students very early after that. New classroom furniture and equipment. We always try to, we have some old furniture, and we're trying to make sure that our students have, you know, the furniture that they rightfully deserve. New generator. Just a few months ago, with the inclement weather, we had a power outage. We want to make sure that each building is equipped with a generator where we can provide emergency lights. The kitchens can also be generated with electricity. So we want to get a new generator now for the middle school. It's a big building, and they're the ones that have the older, oldest generator. A new pickup truck with a plow, our equipment. Our cleaning equipment is getting older and older and older. And if you have noticed, this winter, we needed more and more to make sure that our buildings are safe for our students when they walk and obviously for the parents driving to the school, and the parking lots are clear. Classroom renovations needed for new middle school autism class. You know, we want to provide our students with the best education possible, all of our students. So we want to renovate the classes to make sure that we meet the needs of those students with autism. We want to refurbish retention wall by the tennis court. It's needed. It's becoming really unsafe, and we want to refurbish that retention wall. And we want a complete refi, refinishing of the high school gymnasium floor. It is utilized between our rec programs in the community and our sports teams here. It is utilized almost every day, especially in the winter, okay? And we want to refinish so they have a beautiful gymnasium to go to. And as Mrs. Gerishel, the state provided us with additional state aid for security measures. So we're going to be, again, the board put together a committee, an advisory committee for safety and security. And we want to make sure that we look at every physical aspect of the buildings to make sure that our students are provided with safety and secure areas, whether it's doors, whether it's equipment that can provide scanning system for teachers to come in or students to come in, and making sure that we strengthen our safety and security in our buildings. With that said, once again, I want to thank everyone involved in the creation and development of this budget. And now we're going to open it up to the audience to come up and ask any questions that have to do with the budget for 2018-19 school year. Thank you, everyone.
Just want to thank the Mrs. Gerishel, Mr. Gerido for their presentation tonight. I also want to thank all the hard work that the finance committee put in to come up with this fine budget. I don't remember it being this low in quite some time. So kudos to you all for this hard, hard job you came up with for us, and thank you. This time, anyone wishing to come up and ask anything on the budget, please come forward, state your name and address. I'm going to try to hold you to three minutes if we can. We'll see. Oh, okay. Hold you three minutes.
There's no time to pull that in, correct? Thank you. Saul Kears, 150 Bourbon Street. Just as, for, just for the sake of information in the future, is there a way for, and thank you for the progress I made, is there a way to put the estimated year and/or and estimated? Yes, just so like, say the STEAM room wants to be completed by 19, so people know.
Yeah, actually, this is a good question, Saul. I know I've been talking about the strategic plan that's testing point. Then certainly, as you remember from all--
That's exactly--
Yeah, the timeline for all our projects, exactly what's going to happen here as well.
Okay, great. So that way people know that--
Yes.
You know, during this year, and also the board notes that this is-- and of course, things change, right? But at least to have a guide to work from. Regarding the expenditures, the slide that had the budget for 17, 18, and 18, 19. Just those four line items that create the additional state aid, where are they in the expenditure? Like, where are they included?
Saul, you're talking about the computation to the far right?
Yes.
State facilities tuition would be located in the line labeled "out of district tuition, regular education."
Okay.
The seventy thousand asbestos removal would be towards the bottom, the capital outlay figure of seven hundred seventy thousand.
Thank you.
The two hundred eighty-seven thousand, where I said we're leaving that in capital maintenance and reserve. You're not going to see on the expenditure side. You're going to see instead on the revenue side.
Okay.
When you look at the revenue chart, which also shows the two years. Last year, we deducted six hundred thousand dollars from capital and maintenance reserve. And notice in next year's budget, we're not withdrawing anything. That's a zero there. So that's where that figure comes in.
So the two eighty-seven--
Because when, let me explain a little further. When the committee initially started working, you know, back in January, our initial list of revenue had in it a withdrawal of two hundred fifty thousand dollars from capital reserve and a withdrawal of thirty-seven thousand from maintenance reserve. But once we got the notice of the additional state aid, we reconvened and made some decisions. And the decision was to not utilize the reserve money at all. We were able to put together the budget just by using the additional state aid given to us. And then finally, the one hundred fifty-four thousand approximately for new security measures would be found in the line labeled "contracted maintenance services." You'll see that that figure went up and--
I guess there were reductions because it doesn't equal--
Right, right. You know, you don't see what our initial plan was as of the middle of February. You'll see, you know, the final result.
And just so I can be clear, so the two eighty-seven is the reason that the capital and maintenance reserve is not being included? Because that two eighty-seven is being kept in?
Right. We left, it's, it's still sitting in reserve. And in the future, if the sitting board decides to possibly do some other sort of capital project, you know, that would be one option to help finance. What that project might be--
It allows this a buffer or a-- a bit of padding, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but foresight, let's call it. This is foresight for--
We all know that we have very old-school buildings here that, you know, we try our best to maintain. But, you know, they are aging and lots of work could be done, you know, lots of renovations. There are always more leaves than unfortunately--
Like the list that's at the bottom?
Yes.
And then just my other question was, and thank you for that. That amount does not need to be used within three years? Could it be kept in forever?
No, no, yes.
Okay. And that's to help with capital projects?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, I was doing some research and just wanted to confirm something. So the 17, 18 is the actual budget that was presented here, correct? Seventeen, eighteen, not eighteen, like seventeen, eighteen?
Seventeen, eighteen is the actual budget that you see listed there, yes.
And then just for confirmation, last year, projected budget under the equalization aid was about four hundred thousand dollars less. Is that that four hundred thousand dollars--
Yes, well, if you recall, last year, we received, after the budget was set, an additional amount of state aid, and I believe it was four hundred three thousand dollars and change. And we had to either immediately return it to the taxpayers or put it in somewhere in the seventeen, eighteen budget. We were not obligated to say exactly where until I submitted this budget-- software data--
And then that's what these purchases, one, two, and three, it was decided to apply to that.
Right. If you notice, the amounts doubled--
Correct.
From the previous year.
Actually, I guess it was a little less because of the interest that we saved. So that's good. So that, so that amount, for lack of a better term, all things being the same, will be less. Because that hundred and fifty and, or that, since it's doubled, that--
Are you talking about going, I just want to make sure I understand your question. Going forward to 2019, 2020?
Correct. That'll be nothing.
You could expect to see those lease purchase payments as part of our future budget, yes?
Okay.
But then again, the seven hundred seventy thousand capital outlay project will not be there.
And the legal set of settlement, how much is that?
What you see listed in the eighteen, nineteen budget is the final payment. That's it.
So it was three hundred thousand? I thought it was a five hundred thousand dollar settlement?
I believe it was--
No, no, this is an actual, I remembered, again, the board was--
This is the budget. So you've got two budget combos, is that right?
No, but I'm saying it equals three hundred, right? It does.
But it was more than that.
Correct.
And that's bigger--
We painted over the budget.
I think you painted like within the month, remember? You had, you had the foresight--
Yes.
To include it in previous budgets.
Yes.
And that, I think it was two fifty, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe you're correct.
Was included. So now--
And if your point is that it was not listed on the screen that way, you're right. You don't see it in the sixteen, seventeen budget.
But in the individual line items of the huge budget, it's there because--
Yes.
It basically was consolidated and then paid off within thirty days, I believe, which is again foresight. So I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And then, again, just doing math, the increase from-- Oh, so I noticed the salaries and insurance, which includes FICA and PERS and everything. In seventeen, eighteen was about seventy-six percent, if I'm not mistaken? And then it became seventy-eight percent. Is that just because of the two percent increase, let's say, or is there additional staff?
Well, there's a variety, there's several variables involved. Of course, the salary increases and then also the change in staff. Someone leaves, a new person gets hired, not always at the exact same salary. Sometimes lower, sometimes higher.
I'm sorry. What were you saying, Mr. Gerido? I'm sorry.
There's three hundred thousand extra in the health projects.
Right, and again, just to understand, does that mean the increase is a payment or does that mean more people going to the-- and again, there's no, I have no comment on that. I just would like, for the sake of information.
Could you repeat your question?
Mr. Gerido said that there was an increase in the, about three hundred thousand dollars in the health and dental. And my question was--
Cost, dog, yes.
It was cost, not more people into the system. Or maybe it's a combination of both.
Most likely, it's ninety-nine point nine percent cost.
Cost, okay. And then, I meant to, but the questions are-- So from eighteen, from seventeen, eighteen to eighteen, nineteen, the levy, the increase was two hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. And the maximum was twenty-two fifteen two oh five. Just if it's one percent, my question is, so how come the increase is two seventeen, but that one percent bank cap is three sixty? Is it because of those other adjustments?
Because of the adjustments we're given. And when the state does the two percent computation, it's not a strict two percent on last year's tax levy. They add into that figure the enrollment adjustment, and then they compute two percent.
Thank you.
So it doesn't match exactly.
Thank you. And I thank you for explicitly stating that the board does not plan to, hopefully does not foresee the need to use that. So if after three years, and again, this is just, I had a discussion with the council. And the easiest way to put it is, this bank cap is, let's say, a credit. You have, you have a line of credit, it's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Because it's, it's not real money. There's no money that's being put aside. It's a line of credit. So let's say if, for some reason, there's something that comes in that's unforeseen that costs three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you can pull on this line of credit, use it, but then it goes into the subsequent year's budget. Is that my understanding?
Correct. And remember that this is all based upon the fact that the board is limited as to how much they may increase a budget without having to go out to the taxpayers and community with a special vote if we wanted to increase things further. So it becomes part of that figure.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure just on your statement. I, Saul, I want to clarify for myself. He's asking, is this three hundred sixty thousand dollars, which is not there--
Right. Right.
It's about wherever. If next week, or I shouldn't say that, if in September...
Something happens.
Something happens. We have those three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Little, but you can, but you can, you can raise the funds up to that amount, apply to the next year's budget.
Right.
In next year's, in next year's budget.
In two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty?
And it's not quarter of two percent.
It's not.
That's correct, right, that's correct. So it's...
Mr. President, it may be worthwhile explaining that we kind of did that back in two thousand and ten, or two thousand and twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Yeah.
Right, 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 because we used that, that bank cap, but it hurt us.
It did hurt us.
So I just want to clarify, what you're saying, you're asking, you're right. What we did is we went one percent. In this particular year, we're allowed to go two, and I think we did a great job.
You did.
I guess, I'll look on the downside of it with this three hundred and sixty thousand. Let's just use this year. If we are allowed to go up four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars as a two percent, if, let's just take that same number for next year. If we are allowed to go up four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and we still needed more, we could actually go up to seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars without having the taxpayers to one vote on it.
Correct.
So that's where it's the bad part about...
It's a concern.
It's, it's, it's very good. Okay, I'll use it as a concern that the next sitting board...
It's gonna hit it.
Doesn't, doesn't use that or even think of using that.
Right, yes.
That's all I'm saying.
Yes, I agree with you, correct, yes.
I'm not saying they're gonna use it. I'm just saying I hope they don't think of using it because it's gonna come back to the taxpayers to say, okay, if it wasn't forty-four dollars there this year, now it's gonna be eighty-eight dollars a year.
Right, right.
That's all I'm saying. So it's a good thing, yet not a bad thing.
It's a great thing because, and I'll state, so, I don't know for some board members in twelve and thirteen, am I correct, Mrs. Gerstein? It was a zero percent increase. I love you, I love you twelve.
There were three years previously in that chart where we had zero.
It was great because everyone was like, this is great.
But then, of course, what happens, and eventually catches up with, right?
We get hit with a baseball bat.
Yeah. So please keep that in mind and understand, like Ms. Gerstein said, there's more needs than there are funds.
Right.
But it, it's important to, to let the taxpayers know that this money is not some kind of piggy bank that's gonna be broken open automatically.
Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Hopefully, after three years, it just goes to zero and we just say, you know, we didn't need, thank you for that. Great, all right. Thank you, I appreciate that. And then my, my final comment is, oh no, I have two comments, I'm sorry. So one was, the way it stands now with the cap and the two percent, it hits two point one. Right now, if that ever happened, the point one percent would be voted on by the public. But if, is that correct? I'm just saying, so let's say it goes up, let's say it's a three percent.
Just to make sure, for example, for example, if you go to the revenue slide in the printout where I showed the, what the computation by the State Department of Education was for Roosevelt Park for this year, for the maximum.
Yes.
If this board proposed a budget where the tax levy was over the twenty-two million one, we would not be able to do that unless we put it out to the public for a vote, and the amount above the twenty-two million, the town would have to vote on, yes?
Correct. So if it, so if it came out to two point, let's say it came out to three percent, the voters would only be able to decide on that one percent, not three percent?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's...
The amount above that...
Above that two percent?
That computation, yes.
Yes, right.
If, if this is bank cap?
No, 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 this is, let's say, let's say we need, let's say something happened, and instead of twenty-two million, it became twenty-five million. The voters would be able to vote on three of them.
Correct.
Not the twenty, not the...
Only the amount above the maximum tax levy computation.
I was just using percentages.
No, no, I was, we're sitting one percent, we're kind of saying, we don't have to, because that would be three percent, actually, we don't have to do that because we have that bank money.
But if we didn't?
Right, 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 correct.
Just for the sake of information, if elections move to April, the taxpayer would vote on the entire increase, or the entire budget, actually.
Correct.
And zero, if it's point, if it's, if you raise it by a dollar, the voter, the election, not the, I say much.
Zero, but it's still up the hook.
If it was negative, it's still up the hook, okay?
You got the point, yes.
So that's, that's just an understanding that, that was the compromise, I guess, when moving elections in November was brought about. And then my final comment is, thank you very much for giving the explanation of the forty-eight dollars. And, and I spoke with you, this is for the school calendar year.
Correct. Our budget ends by the school year, but the State Department software ends by the school year, which I know makes it a little hard.
Because the property taxes are calendar year. So, again, we have a mountain to deal with. Just doing a rudimentary math. Last year, if I'm correct, it was about a hundred and thirty-three dollar increase.
Correct. I checked that myself. I think you were gonna come up and ask.
So if you do a hundred and thirty-three and forty-four, and we average that, it's about an eighty-eight dollar increase. But that's just a comment because the work you do is not based on a calendar year. The work you do is based on a school year. So, so I commend you for that. You did, you worked with what you had. It just happens that, taking the last school year, the average raises, but phenomenal job. Do this every year, please.
We, we, I can say we always try. We're not always as successful, but we will continue to try our hardest.
And I would just, I always said at, no, do it one point nine or one point eight. Try to go below. You guys went way below, so, thank you.
What's up? The news about additional state aid continues in the future?
Well, if there's a piggy bank somewhere that keeps getting money, sure, I'd tell you about it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Jacob, make every six, twelve, share the name of your Roosevelt Park. I'd like to thank you for giving us a little more than a three minutes for a thirty-six million dollar budget.
It was a joke. It wasn't as serious. He knew Roosevelt Park was a joke.
On the agenda, four, number fourteen, donation.
This is just another budget, I was gonna cheat her.
Yeah, but can I include it?
Thanks, 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 thanks. Next time, we have another, we have another public action.
That's right, give another one.
That would limit the three minutes, though.
On expenditures, rent, legal settlement, is that the, East Westfield Avenue?
Yes, yes.
That's seven, dot, after this page.
What is being done with the rental money that we were paying for early childhood and law lift?
We didn't put it in the budget, so that's why we're only at one percent. We helped, that's where it helped.
You did, ooh.
We didn't add it to the budget, okay, so that helped us, so we didn't have to add to the budget to add more money, so that's why we were able to go and help put down the one percent increase. That was part of it, to take that out of it. There was no expenditure.
The roof at middle school, has that been corrected? There, there was someone said it was leaking. The half of two, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That was, that was many months ago, and yes, it has been completed, yes.
Well, that's part of the budget, right?
No.
Last year's budget.
That was last year's.
You spent the money or you didn't spend the money?
We spent the money.
You spent the money?
We spent the money.
Ladies and gentlemen, the audience, viewing audience, I apologize, I didn't see the children in the back, all the way up in the back. Members of the board, good evening.
Evening. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address on the budget.
Mr. President, I have a question about the budget. Is this just for the public or the board members gonna ask?
Board members?
Okay. So there has been a lot of apprehension about the park test in many circles, and in this budget, I see that there is no amount for the park for next school year. Is that signaling that there will be no park or there will be a replacement? But why is there no funding here, Ms. Gerstein, or?
The park test does not cost the school district any money, never did, and hopefully never will. So it's not a line item you would see in a budget. Preparation is comprised of, you know, the salaries of our teachers, staff, technology, programs, but there's not a specific line item for park test because there's no cost for that.
Well, let, let me rephrase that. In the previous year, the seventeen eighteen budget, there is eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty there.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Seku.
And in the following year, there's nothing.
Sorry, Mr. Seku, I, I thought you were talking about expenditures. You're referring to the revenue slide. Now I understand what your question is. So I'll explain to you. Last year's state aid was given to us in the categories that you see listed on the slide. Categorical transportation aid, special ed aid, equalization aid, security aid. Governor Christie gave other state aid in the amount of one dollar one year. He then had that eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars that he labeled park readiness aid, et cetera. The new governor gave us more money, additional state aid, and he chose the categories, or he and his staff chose the categories that you see listed there. Categorical transportation aid, special ed aid, equalization aid, security aid. For whatever reason, you'd have to ask them, Governor Murphy and his staff, why they chose those areas, but that's the report that was given to us.
So it's, it's not there because the state government decided not to include this year? Is that what?
They didn't earmark it then.
They didn't label it that way. Park test, of course, we all know, and I'm sure you know, is happening right now throughout the state of New Jersey. Whether it will happen again next year, we don't know. We all have our hopes and opinions, but as of now, we don't know anything definitive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This time we'll close the public portion on the budget. We'll move on to the agenda. The second agenda motion for personnel, and issue of substitute, staff resignation, staff appointments, eternity leave of absolute request, sick day number five.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments?
I actually had a point of clarification.
Sure.
Either Mrs. Gerstein or Mr. Gertner.
Ms. Gerstein.
Sorry. With regards to number five, the sick day, as a matter of process, this has already been discussed with the RPEA department, appears on our agenda, right?
Yes, the RPEA is the one who initiates this.
Fair.
They send a letter to the superintendent.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Vice President Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Cancino?
Yes.
Mr. Hemmaway?
Yes.
Mr. Linegang?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Seku?
Yes.
Mr. Signorella?
Yes.
President Horns?
Yes.
On roll call, motion carries.
Under education, items six through eight, education programs, educational trip requests, harassment, intimidation, bullying incidents. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under business, monthly nine through fifteen, monthly certification, rule of minutes, rule of bills, rule of transfers, grant application, donation, and construction of buildings and grants. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? I will be abstaining from the minutes of the last meeting.
Mr. President, I too need to abstain from item number ten. And I had a question. What was the supplies that were donated in number fourteen? Is there a value associated with that donation, or is it just under five hundred, under two fifty?
There are resources for the autism class, just general resources.
Like classroom supplies, class?
Yes, classroom supplies.
Fair enough.
Any other comments? Okay, roll call, please?
Motion.
What's that?
Motion.
I have a motion. All, all, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, there's no one other things in here. Continuing business. Any other continuing business? Any new business?
I, I have something, Mr. President. A neighbor of mine brought to my attention that those residents who are going to New York City are finding a hard time to get parking at the train station. So I'm, I'm bringing this to the attention of the board and actually, Mr. Gertner, about availability of parking at the board building. If there, is there any parking? And from what you told me, residents who get this parking is willing to pay to use the board parking. So my question is to the president and/or Mr. Gertner, is there parking at the board office?
Um, no, it's a liability, first of all, to have other people parked there, and how, well, it's just, it's, it's a liability. And we have visitors that come in there, if we did have somebody come in there, there'd be no parking for them. So there is no availability for anybody to park it other than visitors to the board office, on school business, or the employees that work in the building.
Mr. Seku, that's exactly what Mr. Horns said. Almost on a daily basis, we do have state members, Trump for professional development at the board office or any other business related to, to the board of the school districts. So I would say that very few spots, and if, if anything, the liability will be very, very expensive to provide that.
All right, thank you.
Any other new businesses?
Mr. President, I just wanted to, just go back to personnel, and I just wanted to thank Mrs. Klum for her years of service to the school district, and I wish her well in our future endeavors.
This time, I'll open up the second public portion. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address, and any item you'd like to speak on. Three minutes on this particular.
So here's a one fifty, probably a stream. Also, as a streaming parent, I'm excited here to go. But with the business, I guess, there's gonna be interviews and, like I said, it has to be, it's been done before September, so best of luck to you. You do one thing, I need to... You do one thing, and something else pops up. Just as a matter of work, Mr. Cancino gave notice of his absence. Thank you. And who was on the finance board?
Ms. Powers, Mr. Miller, Mr. Seku.
Well done, well done. Not to the previous ones, you guys, you did all right. No.
Not so well.
Not so well.
Yeah, we worked together.
And on the personal, the Sherman School Variety Show. I don't know if any of you caught that. It was phenomenal.
Absolutely.
I am not someone who gives out praise, even for my own child. And it was, it was very, it was very, it was just like a variety show. It was actually like the old school variety shows, it was excellent. And I don't know if it's been presented, but as a parent, what would need to happen to have it like here at the high school? Is there any kind of paperwork or requests that would need to be done or something like that? Just because the sound system here is much better?
Actually, a lot goes on here, so we have to make sure that...
Scheduling.
There's a scheduling. But the principal, if they would like to have it here, they actually can just contact the high school personnel and try to work something out.
Excellent.
If that's not, that wouldn't be an issue.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to speak about, as is done correctly when Mr. McGarver takes over his time or I go over my time. At the last meeting, there was on the agenda to have two people present certificates to the wrestlers. And then Mr. Signorella, Signorella's not here. The third just approached and began giving a certificate. I have no qualms with that, it's great. But since it was on the agenda, would it have been better for him to have done it during the public portion of the meetings?
I wasn't here, so I can't comment.
Because what's a stop, like if I wanted to give an award, so if the, you know, the senator gives an award, the frigular gives an award, then I could be like, "I wanna give an award too."
Yeah, and you know what, Mr. Kirsten, I think due to the, I see what you're saying, and I agree with what you're saying. But I think due to the logistics of the situation with all the boys here and about ready to leave after recess, I think he wanted to catch them.
Right. But, I mean, just to get, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's okay. The board has the ability to modify the agenda.
Correct, but they never did.
In the, well, they did by allowing it to continue, essentially. You know, nobody objected to that happening.
Well, I think would have been, would have been poor to be continued.
What we'll do is if we have something, any...
Or support, later to do that, like sit down, right?
No, we would have to take a look at it, and hopefully we would know prior.
Correct.
And then we could make the adjustment to the agenda if we had to.
Jacob McGarver, six, four, shared the name of Roseville Park. Item fourteen, donation. Valley National Bank, we did business with them?
No, it was just a donation they gave us for room supplies. They were nice people, they gave us money for, you know, supplies for our kids.
Generous.
They should give us some money, too, though.
Keeps the door open.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly, I know where you're going.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public portion. At this time, at this time, it will be, let it be resolved at the Roseville Park Court of Education meeting hereby convened through executive session for the discussion of the following subjects, which is personnel. It is anticipated the executive session will take approximately thirty to forty-five minutes. The board may take action whenever convened the public session. And the minutes of the executive session shall be released to the public when reason for the executive session no longer exists. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, in fact...
Aye.
You were made. Motion carries. When the executive session will hopefully come back within thirty to forty-five minutes. Maybe soon. Do I have a motion to go into open?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are in the executive session for about approximately forty minutes. We spoke on personnel and student matter. No, no, no action is going to be taken from that meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll take a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, have a good night, drive safe.